Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 11th meeting of the Chapakua Central School District Board of Education. We've been in executive session since 7:00 PM discussing legal issues, getting advice from council. Do I have a motion to bring us back to public session?
I move to bring us back to public session.
I'll second.
All right.
I.
Can we please stand state pledge allegiance led by Brockagee Shepherdson?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I just have a couple of things to report on. On this past Friday, they had, we had the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund Gala at the Mount Kisco Country Club. It was a sellout event again. It was a wonderful evening. Mike De Bellis, one of our teachers, a technology teacher, and our wrestling coach was honored, as well as Kelly Mofield Blair. And just a great evening, one and all. We don't have numbers yet, but they had a great auction and I can't say enough about that organization. So, thank you for participating and helping students in our district who might not have funds to go to the colleges they want to attend to. Second thing is this Wednesday, Wednesday 13th, 7:00 PM bellatorium, there's going to be a discussion on if you want to be a board member, either school board or library board. And third, well, I have one other thing, I'll pick this up later. Vicky, would you like to talk about some advocacy we've done, or that that's being worked on, so?
Okay. On Thursday, February 28th, the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, together with the chief school administrators of Southern Westchester and the chief school administrators of Putnam, Northern Westchester, hosted a forum for our legislators in the region. I was there and Holly was able to attend as well. And we had a number of legislators there. Our new senate majority leader, Andrea Stewart-Cousins, attended and, you know, lucky for us, she's from our Westchester delegation. And also the new chair of the senate education committee, Shelley Meyer, was there, was also from Westchester. We had David Buckwald, Peter Harkum, Gary Pretlow, Amy Pollan, Sandy Galiff, Tom Abinad, Nanti, and Nader Sayet. So, it was a really nice turnout. Just the schedule for the state budget, you know, of course, if it comes out on time, it'll be April 1st or sooner. And today, we were supposed to have the one-house budget resolutions. I'm not sure if they came out, if they were made public today, but they're supposed to be made public at the latest on March 13th. So, just to review what the governor's proposed, just to give you an idea of the shortfalls. The Educational Conference Board, which is a group of a lot of educational organizations, recommended a $2.2 billion increase to total state aid just to continue current programming. And the governor's budget has proposed less than half of that, $956 million. The ECB had proposed $1.31 billion allocated to foundation aid. The governor only proposed $338, so there's a big, big gap there. So, I think the legislators, of course, are going to increase that. We have about half of our region's school districts receiving a 0.25 percent in foundation aid increase, which is very little. There is an issue in the state that that's referred to as shares. It seems that New York City and Long Island always receive the same level of state aid. New York City always receives 38.86 percent. Long Island always receives 12.96 percent. And if you look at a graph to that effect, you'll see that all of the other districts sort of zigzag up and down and have very unpredictable aid. So, for instance, Westchester and Putnam are always receiving between 3.28 and 5 percent. And Putnam is always receiving .14 to .53 percent. So, we have a lot of volatility while Long Island and New York City has a lot of predictability.
We know why that is.
So, hopefully, while people talk about political agreements that were made way back when. And so, it's unfortunate that state aid is not, still not based on student need.
Couldn't there potentially be lawsuits about that?
There, oh, yes. There was a lawsuit by the Campaign for Fiscal Equity. And in fact, there's a Court of Appeals decision that was finalized in 2006 ordering the state to, you know, to determine aid based on student need.
And they're not doing it.
They were ordered to align state aid according to need. That hasn't been done. They started, it's supposed to be done through the foundation aid formula. So, this started after the, after that Court of Appeals case came down and then we had the recession. And so, then money was intentionally taken away from state, you know, education funding.
Gap.
And since then, there was a gap elimination, which was restored. So, we went through that. But the foundation aid formula is still not being run. And if it is being run at all, they're utilizing out-of-date data. So, I get what you have in front of you that I gave out were all the handouts from that forum, so you could look at that in your own time.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And don't ask any questions you have.
And not to be the dead horse, but gap, they took all the money away from us. They eliminated gap, but they didn't give us back what they owed us, right? So.
Right. So, the gap elimination was, if you took state funding as it was supposed to be doled out to school districts, then they would intentionally remove a certain percentage of that, just to fill in the gap in the state budget.
It's part of the conversation.
It did, yes, it did. So, there was a lot of lobbying against that and so that, that system was eliminated about three years ago.
But they never gave us back the money they took from us.
But the foundation aid was never, right, so we were never reimbursed for that.
And it's somewhere around, that was somewhere around $10 billion of the state, I believe.
No, but even now, Andrew still claims that the state has done their job. Under the terms of the court order, I don't agree with it.
He claimed they had a balanced budget. You can't have a balanced budget if you owe school districts money.
Right. So, the governor's trying to downplay the Court of Appeals decision. He's calling it ghosts of the past and there's a lot of rhetoric around it. But education aid continues to be about a lot of horse trading and a lot of ad hoc decision-making, rather than something that's principled and needs-based. And that's really the problem.
Maybe, I know Oregon wants to change their voting age to 16. Maybe they're right. Maybe the kids need the vote because they're the ones who are getting affected by this.
That could help, yeah. So, there are a lot of issues that we've discussed before. I don't, I don't know that we have time to do that now. But we could, you know, if anyone is interested, we can take the time and review these issues. Again, a little more in-depth, but you have your handouts there. And anyone who's interested in going over it some more, you can contact me or anyone else on the board.
Thank you, Vicky.
Oh, thank you so much.
I only have one more thing, and that's sort of a celebratory thing. Today is Toni Sinat's birthday.
Woo!
So, happy birthday, Toni.
Yeah. Nothing better than being at a board meeting.
And unfortunately, I know the big thing is Bella's having beads.
I know.
I only found out this afternoon, so I wasn't able to get you beads.
It's okay. There was cake and balloons and festive things.
Cake, cakes all over.
It's almost as if they were like Captain Marvel, baby.
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Toni.
Thank you very much.
Christine?
So, now let's transition into our special education and related services budget presentation. So, I'd like to introduce Dr. McCarthy, who will be leading this component presentation for the Board of Education today.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to speak with you again this evening. And this time, I'm speaking to you about the proposed budget for special education and related services for the next school year. Before I start, I want to acknowledge Liz Wright and Kristy Evers, who were with us tonight. They are part of our team. We're a good, strong team and they really help provide me with the information with which we develop this budget, as well as to support throughout the year in implementing all of the recommendations. So, I always like to start with our statement of our commitment to inclusion. As you may recall, this was developed in 2011 with the input of a lot of our constituents. And it's really in keeping with the spirit of IDEA and with our belief system about educating students in an inclusive environment to the greatest degree possible, always being aware of the fact that there are some students for whom being fully included is not appropriate. They would not be able to meet their goals and objectives. And so, we have a variety of other options for those students, but we always try to include first. And I also include for you what has been defined by our strategic coherence plan as the skills and attributes desired for our students when they graduate from Greeley. And the, the plan was developed for all of our students, including our students who receive special education services. So, this really grounds us in all of the work that we do and reminds us of what we are trying to accomplish for our students as they graduate. So, I'll speak to you briefly about some of the priorities for this year. This certainly is not inclusive, but understanding that there are three presentations tonight. I'm going to try to keep it succinct, but provide you with as much information as I can. As you well know, we had our tri-state consortium consultancy visit in the beginning of the year, which really took up a good portion of the first part of the year in preparing for the visit, hosting the visit, and then receiving the recommendations. I'll speak a bit more about that a little later. We were in our second year this year of our KEAT fellows, the Chapakua Accessible Instruction Teaching Fellows. And this is a group of professionals who come together throughout the year, as well as do independent work on their own inquiry questions about how to better design instruction to be accessible for all of our students. And so, we've got, for example, focus areas, a music teacher. And our middle school is really looking at how using technology of audio and video helps their students better practice and better prepare for their lessons and their ensembles when they get to school. We have elementary teachers looking at small group instruction in math. And we have a teacher in the high school looking more at technology, in particular, an app called Padlet, and using that in her class. And then, when the fellows get together, we often get together with the ATF, the Assistive Technology Fellows, because so much of what the KEAT fellows are doing is utilizing technology. So, we often like to bring them together and share their learning together. It's not always possible because it's difficult getting substitutes for a larger group of teachers during the school day, but certainly our after-school meetings, we bring both fellowships together. We are in our first year this year with the Wilson Reading Fellowship. We currently have 13 teachers in a cohort, 10 here in the district and three who are going through BOSIs, that by the end of this school year, it's anticipated that they will all be certified in Level 1 Wilson Reading. We've been continuing to work toward the comprehensive K-12 counseling plan. I'll talk a bit more about that as we move into next year. With regard to transition for some of our students who won't be transitioning to college, but will be transitioning to the workforce, and we've been utilizing services of, of a, an agency that's been providing some job development and job coaching for some of our students, and that's been very successful. We've continued with our Special Education Advisory Committee and using our parents to help us tackle some of the issues in the district around social inclusion and helped us with preparation for the tri-states. And Ruler, Ruler is currently in its second year in the high school and its first year in the middle schools. In looking for next year, we're going to continue with some of the good work that we did this year. As you may recall, tri-states made some recommendations. And Holly, thanks to your great suggestion, we pulled the steering committee together again. They were very appreciative, actually, of the fact. And so, we looked through the report and we kind of unpacked the report and then identified some things that maybe we were surprised about from the visit in the report, and then some of the things that we felt would be priorities moving forward. And set ourselves out on a task of gaining some more information and bringing it back so that we can make a plan and set a timeline for some of, of implementation of some of the recommendations. So, one of the areas that I'm thrilled to be part of this year, to a much greater degree, is the Professional Development Committee. And with, in that committee, we're really looking at not only further embedding special education and aspects of training required, better required for special education in general education teachers, but also making some very specific training opportunities for teachers. So, this summer, we're offering a collab academy. It's going to be a two-day professional development opportunity for general education teachers, special education teachers, related service providers, any of our professionals that are collaborating together to benefit our students. And we'll have a keynote speaker. We're going to be bringing in some experts in the field, as well as utilizing our own expertise within the PD team and Liz and Kristy, and looking forward to providing really good, strong professional development this summer. We're going to look at, one of the things that they talked about was the language we use amongst the different buildings and how we're talking about the same thing, but might be using different labels for them, as well as talking about different things, but using the same label. So, members of this steering committee are going back out into the, into their schools and gathering information about exactly what are we calling what and bringing it back together. And already, we've identified ways that we can just change our own language and model for others. So, for example, in integrated co-teaching classes, the time that the teachers get together, we're calling collab time. So, that comes the collab. And so, then that leads into calling the class a collab class. So, we're just looking at different labels that we're using and trying to provide, you know, clearer, more consistently used definitions. So, for next year, the high school will have finished its second year of the Ruler Training and should be ready to start implementation to different degrees with the students. Belle will be going into its second year of training, as well as Seven Bridges. And our elementary schools will be starting their first year of the Ruler Training. The principals were actually over in BOSIs this morning. I saw them over there this morning when I was there for, for another workshop. We're going to start a second cohort for the Wilson Reading Fellowship. We do have a three-year plan that all reading and special education teachers and, and looking now at including E&amp;L teachers will be trained in Level 1 Wilson. So, we'll be getting out that application for that fellowship soon. We're going to continue the good work we're doing with transition. We've actually put out an RFP to different agencies to look at who would be the best agency to support us in doing some job development and job coaching for some of our students. Kristy and I are also going to hit the, what's that term? Hit the, not hit the road. Well, we're going to pound the, pound the pavement this summer and knock on some doors, or maybe even before. One of our goals is to get ourselves into Whole Foods, because that provides so many opportunities for our students, because they have different job responsibilities and different departments in Whole Foods. So, we're going to continue with that work. We're going to continue finding ways to better include our parents and participation in, in our whole, all that we do. We have, last year, our State Performance Plan survey was about parent participation. And they surveyed, we gave a survey to all parents after they went to their annual review meeting and they completed the survey. We actually had more surveys returned than the state required. We only had about 140 surveys returned, but statistically, that was a good number as far as the state was concerned. And they asked parents three different areas. One was schools' efforts to partner with parents. One was the impact of special education on the family. In other words, what did parents learn from the process that would help them with their family? And the third was parent participation. And our outcome, our positive response rate was 90.1 percent, which is a high percentage outcome, but we want it even higher. So, our plan is to utilize the Special Education Advisory Committee to help us look a little bit deeper into those areas that we feel that we may want to make some, make some adjustments or changes or provide more information for parents so that they feel that they can better, you know, better participate in the process. Social inclusion continues to be a strong focus of ours. Dr. Ackerman is leading an SEL Fellowship. I'm participating in that fellowship and some good, strong work is happening there, not only looking at Ruler, but looking, looking at other ways to include our students and to empower our high school students to kind of facilitate that process. Some recent and really exciting news that Jason may be sharing with you next week is that Jason and I have been talking since, since last year about possibly bringing Unified Sports into the district. Unified Sports is an inclusive sports team. You've probably all heard of the Special Olympics. Well, Special Olympics is moving away from kind of segregated, you know, Special Olympics for just people with disabilities and bringing in this concept of Unified Sports. And they are competitive sports teams, but they are sports teams, students with disabilities, students without disabilities, working together, training together, and competing together. So.
It's kind of like inclusion for sports.
Yeah. So, Jason and I have been talking a lot about that. And last year, it wasn't possible because there weren't another, enough local teams that were going to participate. But this year, there are like four or five within our area that are looking to participate. So, fingers crossed, and Jason, I'll talk more about that next week. Next year, next week. We're looking at it for the spring, if we can, if we can make it happen. And we would start with basketball in the spring, basketball team. So, I'm really excited about that. We've been looking at our Section 504 Chairperson responsibilities this year, particularly in the high school. And that'll be a priority for next year, too, to see if we need to make some changes in that area. And the comprehensive K-12 counseling plan. So, last year, I shared with you the work that we did with a group that we call the Student Support Plan Team. It's the same group of individuals. We're just changing the wording a bit to, to focus on the counseling plan that's required to be in effect at the beginning of next school year. I was at a workshop today with Rebecca Mullin and Linda Ryan, really looking at what we're doing. We're going to meet with the entire team, including all of the counselors and the psychologists on Friday to really move that plan forward. And we will be in, in good shape to have a plan in place for next year. One of the other requirements is to have an advisory committee. And one of the required members on the advisory committee is a Board of Education member. So, I will be reaching out to the board at some point to seek membership on that advisory committee as we move forward with that. Another requirement is to every year, present to the Board of Education about the plan. So, I will be coming to you next year and presenting to you on the implementation of the plan year one. So, now I'll go a bit into our, our statistics, as I do every year, by classification. Here are our students this year. We have 360 students on Bed's Day, so in October, that were classified as students with disabilities and having an IEP. And we had 42 preschool students. The preschoolers got cut off of this chart for some reason. I apologize for that. The numbers are fairly consistent, you know, year to year, they change a bit with classifications. And I really think it has more to do with the cohort of students than anything else. We've got stable CSC chairpersons who are working together and making decisions based on the same criteria, but it changes from year to year, depending on the students who are enrolled. I apologize for this. Usually, the New York State report card has its fiscal supplement out by March, but it's not out yet. So, I don't have all of the data for you. But what you can see here is that our classification rate last year had gone up a little bit. It was 10.2. Now, it's back down to around where we've been hovering for many years, about 9.6. It's still lower than similar districts and lower than New York State's classification rate. I mean, yes, New York State's classification rate.
These are taken from the day in October where they.
Yep, yep. Right.
Can I just ask on the previous one?
You're comparing apples to apples.
There were certain data based on VR2, special education. What does VR2 stand for?
It's, it's the data that we submit. It's all of these different data reports that go into state education. And so, they look at it based on disability, based on ethnicity.
In terms of how they classify. I just wasn't sure what VR2 meant, that's.
It's one of the state reports that we submit every year and one of the October reports that we submit through the data warehouse.
All right, thank you.
Our CSC placement on Bed's Day, you can see we have, of our 360 students, we had 328 students who were educated here within district, 31 students who were in out-of-district placements, and one student whose disability leads that student to require instruction in the home environment. And again, I don't have the 1718 data for, this is the data with regard to students who are educated within a general education classroom for 80 percent or more of the time. And we've spoken about this before, being a district that believes in inclusion and, and really gears our supports and services for students in an inclusive environment. We have 86.1 percent of our students who are in a general education classroom for more than 80 percent.
Are other districts, other districts in the state moving toward inclusion, or?
Excuse me, more and more are. So much, for example, is doing a whole lot of work around inclusion right now and bringing in Julie Costin from Syracuse to, to help them. More and more schools are moving toward inclusion. Excuse me, I'd be interested to see what the data for 1718 is for similar districts. So, of our out-of-district placements, here are our placements on Bed's Day, broken up between, as you can see, BOSIs, other public schools, approved private schools, and residential schools. I'll say the one area where we're not meeting target, but we're close, but not meeting target with New York State, is with regard to separate schools. So, the state target for 1617, again, I don't have 1718, for students in separate schools was 5.6 percent. And we were 6 percent, so we were close. So, what does that mean? A separate school doesn't only mean a residential program. It means any school that does not have students without disabilities in the school. So, it could be a private school, for example, like the Clearview School, state-approved private school that we can send students to. And it can also mean a BOSIs class that's within a school building that doesn't have students without disabilities. So, for example, a couple of years ago, BOSIs started to rent space from Terrytown for their Tappan Hill Elementary School. Terrytown's no, no longer using that school, so BOSIs started renting the space. And they run phenomenal programs in that school, but there aren't opportunities for the students to be integrated at any point during the day, so it's considered a separate school. So, the state, in the spirit of inclusion, would rather districts send students to programs where they have opportunities to be integrated with non-disabled peers. When our CSC makes decisions with regard to out-of-district placements, a lot of things are considered. And, and most of it is really the school that can address the student's particular needs. So, sometimes that pulls our separate school data a little more to the side of being more segregated.
It's kind of interesting. We have a very high inclusion rate, but also a slightly above-target separate schools.
Yeah, I think some of it, too, is just a reflection on how BOSIs has their programs and the private school programs that are segregated. So, for example, last year, and I don't, I don't know what our, I don't know if we're going to be within target for 1718, because like I said, that, that data didn't come out. But in 1718, we had five students in approved private and we had seven students in residential. And I would say there are probably, and I don't want to give. And I would say there are probably, and I don't want to give, I would say there are probably three students that were in BOSI's programs that are in separate settings, because there's also the Walden School up in Putnam, Northern Westchester, that's also considered a separate setting. So, and when you have small numbers, you know, one student can tip you over. So like I said, we are mindful of that, and I also think that we include students to the greatest degree possible, and for those students that we don't include here in the district because their needs are so significant, we kind of make that jump over to something much more restrictive. So I think that has to do with the numbers as well. But we're watching it very carefully because we want to be, you know, within target.
And I have a question about the BOSI's before we leave the slide.
Sure.
Is that the Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSI's or Southern Westchester?
Oh, it includes both.
Okay, because we're part of the Northern, you know, Northern Westchester BOSI's, and you know, we pay into their capital administrative costs, et cetera. Do you know how many of our students are there?
In Putnam?
Yeah.
Of the eight?
Of the eight.
I'm looking at you to do the math. Putnam doesn't have, they have very different classes between Putnam and Southern. And so for some of our students, the classes that Putnam has would not be appropriate. It's probably half and half. I'm trying to think of our students.
We can get that information to you, Vicki.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I don't have anybody in Rockland this year.
Last BOSI's meeting, or the last one I attended, was that we had about five, something around that.
That was last year?
That was last year, yeah.
We'll send that to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question on this slide before we move on as well? So these are all placements that are made by the CSC?
Yes.
Do you track classified students that parents place outside of the district as well?
Yes.
Do you have that information?
Yes.
Or could you send it?
Yep. Some of the parents choose for us to continue to hold CSC meetings for their students. We send a letter every year asking them if they want us to develop an IEP for their students or not. So some of them choose to, some of them choose not to, some of them choose the District of Location to chair the CSC meeting. This year, we currently have thirty students with IEPs who are parentally placed in private schools. Some of them are special education schools, and I would say at least half of them or more are not special education schools.
Thank you.
Just smaller classes. So the components of the budget are the contractual services, such as the agencies that we utilize to provide the transition services or other services for our students. Salaries is a large component, and then the tuition for our students in and out of district placements, transportation, and then our extended school year program. And here's the budget, which is very difficult for our audience members to see, and I apologize, but it's pretty consistent with last year. I think that the total proposed budget is four million, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, and last year it was four million, six hundred and fifty-one. So it's just very slightly above, but the summer program has been reduced, and because we don't continue to need to provide the level of services that we did over the summer, it's not projected for the summer, so that's a bit reduced. So the grand total of the budget is actually down by point one, two percent.
So Heidi, you have a question? And it says, "Main components of budget: contractual services, salaries, tuition for students, transportation, extended school year." And then on the proposed special education budget, I don't see salaries.
Right, so salaries are in a different part of the budget.
This is going back to the components that we presented last week, because the salaries are all taken out of the individual division department and schools. So they are-
They're rolled up into the big number.
Yes, because we want all the salaries to be together.
Okay.
Okay.
Just because here it says component of the budget.
Right.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking globally.
So when you, for example, if you click on the website, you look at the entire budget book, then you will see all the salaries in the special education code.
And you'll see the transportation, too, but I was kind of just talking about globally, the pieces of special education that contribute to the overall budget.
And then this presentation is on the website, so, you know, I know that some of the numbers are difficult to see here, but all our presentations are on the website.
And then we have funding sources. So we have money that comes to us from the IDEA Part E grants that I complete in the beginning of every summer, state aid, and then Medicaid reimbursement. We're still working on the Medicaid numbers for this year. We have a state aid estimated amount. The grant money does come through during the grant year.
So can I just go back to the components, components of the budget? So is it possible to get those components-
So they all adds up.
To separate out those components from the main budget so that we can get an idea of the whole special ed, you know, we can get a whole picture of the special ed program financially. I mean, obviously not today, but you know, if we're going to, you know, look at the main components in a significant way, in a meaningful way, then it would be helpful to have all that, understanding that, you know, that it's duplicative of what's, you know, in the main budget. If we could extract that, I think that would be very helpful.
There have not been any, there have not been any positions added or reduced for this upcoming budget, any salaried positions.
So let me just go over the transportation part for special education, just the transportation, and I'll go to the salaries. So for eighteen, nineteen budget, the transportation is one million, four hundred eleven thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars, and for next year is one million, four hundred forty-one thousand and thirty-five dollars. So there's an increase of thirty thousand dollars for transportation. And for salaries, just give me a couple minutes.
John, why are you looking? Can we say that there's some percentage, like ten percent of the budget is special ed? Is there some little sum like that?
Does that include salaries or not including salaries?
Both.
Okay, so including salary is actually easier. So I'll give you the total, total special education budget for next year is twelve million, eight hundred, eighteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars. And then we had to add in the summer program, I think it's a hundred sixty-five thousand, and then we had to add in the transportation.
We get money back for the summer program, right?
Hundred fifty.
We get money back for the summer program?
That's the part that we are having-
I would money for the summer.
Supposedly.
That's the part that we are having problem collecting in full, but we do collect probably eighty percent.
Okay.
And just for information, we called the state ad, we're going to write off, probably not at the next meeting, but the next, the one after, I think on the twentieth, we'll write off some uncollectible aid.
Maybe we should ask Andrew Coleman from that.
John, you were going to get to salaries, but you went for the total.
Sally, I need a couple minutes.
So maybe what we could do is we can add a slide on the presentation online that pulls out transportation and salaries for special ed staff. That's what you're asking for, right, Vicki?
Just to see a whole budget, as opposed?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be good to put a number to all the main components.
So we will add that slide in between the proposed special ed budget and the funding sources, and then next week when we come to the budget meeting, we can review that slide with the board.
Yeah.
Does that sound like a good idea?
Sounds good.
Okay. Are there any other questions about the special education budget for Dr. McCarthy?
The only question I have, on social inclusion, you talked about Unified Sports. What about other type of inclusion, arts, other social activities, like the high school and the middle schools?
That continues to be a focus, and the opportunities continue to be provided through the clubs in Greeley, through activities in the different levels, in the elementary and the middle school. The Unified Sports is a way to do it in a more systematic way, and also to give students an opportunity to compete with students from other schools that also have Unified Sports teams.
And with like clubs and things in Greeley, who has responsibility for that?
Matt Friedler.
Are me?
Matt, the student support, the student-
Life coordinator.
Life coordinator.
Okay.
Is there an attempt to bring in students from the, you know, the general program who are not part of the special ed program?
Into what? Into the Unified Sports?
To just sort of bring them into, you know, the efforts that are being made in the social inclusion area for special ed students. Is there an attempt to bring them into, more into contact with general ed students? Or rather, to bring some of the general ed students into the implementation of whatever your-
Yes, so for example-
-programs are and your initiatives.
Yes, so for example, at the high school, there are several different clubs, like the ambassadors and different clubs, that are geared for including and bringing people together and including people. And then through the SEL fellowship, looking at how we can empower the student body to develop a systematic way to bring greater opportunities for inclusion. I don't know, Dr. Ackerman, if you wanted to talk more about some of the plans with SEL or just leave it for now.
I think that's fine.
But there's work through the fellowship that that is the sole focus, is really looking at the social inclusion for our students.
Okay, when I think about that, I think mostly of the high school. I think it's easier in the elementary schools, and as you go up in grades, it becomes harder and harder. So I guess my, you know, I'm really thinking of the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Normally, we have comment period after committee reports. In the past, we've had comment period after each budget presentation. I'd like to do that again this evening, so we'll again stick to three minutes on our comments, and maybe if we need a little more time, that would be fine, but the first comment period will be just regarding special education. So if anyone would like to come and speak. Can you give that district's part, please? I got an electronic.
Hello, I'm Liz Heemson.
Liz, with that, that's okay.
I'm special today. So I have just one question, Heidi. Do you feel like you have-
Excuse me, we don't ask, it's just a comment period, it's not a question and answer.
Okay, then I would address my comment to the board and our presenter, thank you. The question I would have is, are we confident that we have enough money in this budget to support our dyslexic students, both identified and emerging, as well as potentially ones that we don't know? So the stats, we know one in five in a classroom is typical. So I'm asking, I'm looking at the budget, I'm not really understanding, the law changed two years ago, and I'm not an accountant, and I'm not an educator by training, so I'm a little out of my depth. So I'm putting the question to you guys as a comment, is to make sure that we feel very confident that the amount of funds that are needed for this population is there. And secondarily, do we feel like, at this point in time, we should be setting up a separate fund in our fund balance as a line item to hold out a set of funds for future, should you need them with this population? Those would be sort of my comments that I would want you guys to be thinking about as you review the budget, and I appreciate everyone's efforts. I know you're doing the best you have, and we never have enough for everything, but I just, I really want you guys on this. I think it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion that we grant Brady additional time to finish his comments.
I'll second that motion.
Hold on, favor?
Bye.
All right.
Hello, everybody. I am Brady McCarthy, known as Junior of High School. I love high school so much. So my teachers and my TAs were helpful to me. And my friends show up in the hallways a lot to say hello to me, a lot of times, though. And in those times, I sit with my different friends of mine. And then, in wrestling, Mike Deepery, he practiced wrestling with me a lot. So in this show called Pirates of my, Pirates of Presence, is my favorite movie. It was, was, was mine, my wrestling friends, that you see me in a play. I am played as Semalo Lieutenant. I have doctor applause because I am a superstar in the show. Next, next is, I am a master whiz. I know on the history a lot, and I am a, I am good writer in English. I am thankful for my teachers and my TAs. I am thankful for my friends and buddies, and I am thankful for myself for doing hard work for this year. And then, good night, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to add a few things. When Brady first arrived here in third grade, he had a hard time even being able to be understood verbally, and so the fact that he's been able to get up here and speak for himself is a huge accomplishment and shows what great work that we've done here at Greeley, and how much hard work he's put into this as well. And just a couple of things that I wanted to hit on for this year, when we're talking about inclusion, at social inclusion at the high school, there's an ambassadors program. Brady's assigned two ambassadors who once cycle have lunch with him, and they also have a text that they do with him that they call the Brady Bunch.
Yeah.
So on weekends, they text back and forth, and Brady likes to send them things that he's working on, and they show what great job he's been doing.
Yeah.
And also, we thought, you know, obviously his teachers have worked really hard about getting him excited in the classroom, getting him involved, and getting him to learn so much. It's interesting to see how much, when I sit down and I look at the projects and the homework that he's been doing, you know, how much he's really learning and stuff that I've forgotten or I never learned in school. And then, as far as inclusion, my daughter is a freshman here this year, and she told me, she said, you know, my chitchee teacher came up to me and said, is your brother Brady McCarthy? And she's like, yeah. She goes, would he like to play football? And she's like, ah, I don't like that. But then he does musicals in the ball. But the fact that they're like, yeah, sure, I'd like to play football. But, you know, and as everybody knows, wrestling has been such a great sport for him. Coach Chavellis luckily was honored the other night, and for all the work he's been doing. But the fact that the wrestling team, again, has just been such a great support system for him, that the fact that- for him, that the fact that the whole team came out to see him in the play specifically and it all came in their jerseys. And at the end of the show, they presented him with his jacket and wanted to show the support. The wrestling team just did a fun ball, in the fun ball tournament, they asked Brady to be his manager there. So they're really, and they're, you know, always commenting on stuff that he posts on Facebook and are really, you know, really out there as friends for him, as well as all the theater people. And just the fact, as he said, he's had different people to eat lunch with every day, the comb over the table. He likes to say, I asked him who it is, sometimes the boys, sometimes the ladies, right?
Yeah.
So he's got all sorts of people out there looking out for him. And again, he comes to me every day and tells me, you know, before I used to be having a great day. And now he goes, oh, I love my life. I've got a great life. And so, you know, that is just showing how he's maturing and how much work has been going in with him. And we're just so proud of him and so thankful that there's this opportunity to be here at Greeley and all the hard work that specialized department and the school and the teachers and how accepting the kids have been have really made a huge difference in his life.
Yeah. Thank you, Jackie.
Brady, can I, Brady, for seven or eight years, your mom has come up here and advocated for you. You are a much better advocate for yourself than your mother ever was. And I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Brady.
Thank you so much.
Let go, Jackie. Thanks, guys. Have a nice day.
Brady, I have gone and listened to probably 100 public comments in 10 years of meetings and that, those were the best public comments I've ever heard anybody make. So I am just so proud of you. Thank you so much for sharing your experiences here in our district. You're awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, bye. Bye.
You did the mic drop.
All I can say is I'm glad I went before Brady.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCarthy.
Brutal act to follow.
Are there any other comments regarding special ed?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so now Dr. Pease is going to present the curriculum and instruction budget. Thank you, Dr. McCarthy.
Thank you so much, Heidi.
That was tremendous. Just give us one second to transition.
Okay, thank you. That was a tough act to follow. We'll do our best. So here we go with the curriculum and instruction budget for next year. I started off with some guiding principles and I'm going to move pretty quickly through these first couple of slides because I know you're very familiar with them. The first one is a board strategic question and I put them there just because they really continue to be a North Star with regard to the way that we work and how we build a budget in the district. And I think there are, there was a conversation at the last meeting about some potential revisions, but there are many good pieces in there that we, you know, continue to guide our work as we move forward. The next one is our vision for teaching and learning. You've seen this before, it had the little blue people on the top of the document, we just reformatted it, but this is the active student learning and strong student collaboration statement that you've seen in the past. And talks about things like engaging all students, meaningful inquiry, imagination, invention, interaction, hypothesizing, reflecting, et cetera. So we can continue to work towards that goal. And you also see that reflected in the district's strategic priorities. So we color coded these district's strategic priorities because four of them came out of the strategic planning process last year. So the end of, towards the end of last school year, there was a report for the strategic planning priorities of the district and the four up towards the top, skills and profile of graduate, district-wide assessment practices, K-12 social emotional learning curriculum and K-12 academic program alignment, all came out of the strategic planning process. And this was really the first opportunity for us to align some budget resources with those priorities because of the timing of that report last year. So we've done that and you'll see that later in this presentation. We have two of the bullets down towards the bottom, they're using instructional space to amplify learning and instructional technology as a tool to personalize learning, which was ongoing work and will remain ongoing work and a priority for the district, priorities for the district. So this is a little bit of a peek under the hood of curriculum and instruction. We throw those words around a lot and in some cases, we struggle with just kind of basic definitions of those things. So I put this slide up to see, understand a little more of the engine that drives teaching and learning in that district. So curriculum really simple is what we teach and when we teach it. Instruction is how we teach it. The hope is, if you've got the right what and when and you know how, then there's student learning and you have assessment to make sure that there is, right? And assessment informs curriculum, what we teach and when we teach it, and you can see the cycle continue around. Each one of these things is like an iceberg, right? That even though it's one simple box with just a couple of words, there is a whole world of research and professional development behind those things. And you can think of professional development as really a kind of a cloak that covers all of that with regard to the work we do with our teachers. The picture gets a bit more complicated with other things that help drive this cycle around. And one of them is this kind of bucket or grouping of principles, like a district's mission, vision, policy, priorities, et cetera, as well as some standards, national standards, state standards, organizational standards that inform our curriculum. And you can see with assessment, it drives not only curriculum in a class and for students, but it also drives the district's data system so we can see how we do and how we progress as a school district. So there was some conversation dialogue last, at the last meeting about our ranking and our proficiency and we had some, you know, there was some commentary about cost per pupil. And so I thought I would provide a little bit more data with regard to how we're doing as a district. This graph shows for the last three years, our proficiency percentile rank for ELA in math. So what that basically means is the state tells us that students that score a three or a four on the New York State Assessment in ELA or math are considered proficient. If we rank our percentage of students that score a three or a four with other districts around the state, you can see our ranking up here on this screen. I actually added a slide based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting and so I've given it to you as a separate handout. I apologize, it wasn't in the original slide deck, but it was prompted by that conversation. I thought I'd give you a little more information about how we actually are doing. So you can see on this slide that you have the ELA grades three through eight, that's the tested grade for that New York State Assessment, and then math three through eight. And if you go all the way over to the right, you see our percentile rank in the state. So that's where we stand as a district. And you can see the, you know, really, really strong performance for the district and that's a tribute to the work that's done here in the district by not only, you know, our faculty and our leaders and our staff members, our support staff in the schools, everybody that supports the instructional program, but also our community. And the community support, the parent support with their students. So it's very impressive and I thought I'd add it into the presentation. So to kind of focus in a little bit more on the curriculum and instruction components and our departmental goals, we continue to support innovative teaching and leading through inspirational professional development, nurture a community of learners and develop each student's full potential through rigorous instruction, powerful, relevant and engaging So one of our district's priorities that I wanted to touch on is how we are working towards increasing the articulation of our curriculum and being purposeful about that. That was one of the strategic planning priorities. And I wanted to list out several of our most important curriculum projects that we have going on right now. We have a K-2 phonics committee that is looking to adopt a phonics program for next year. We've been working on our K-4 scope and sequence with regard to units and unit order and unit pacing, so the experiences that students have across our elementary schools. Increasing our fidelity to our literacy program, which is the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, that's what that acronym stands for. Continue to move forward with our math and focus implementation. We've been doing a lot of work with our health and PE, scope and sequence K-12. We've been mapping our library curriculum, our new GLCs have given us, expanded our, you know, student opportunities and our learning spaces there. So we've been adding some components into that curriculum of computer science and, you know, Makerspace design thinking, things like that, robotics, even some coding. You can see on there, there's still a push for, towards the next generation science standards alignment, ELA curriculum alignment in our middle schools, and then social studies alignment five through 12 to the new social studies framework. So those are the major ones. Believe it or not, there are several subcomponents of most of these. So along with the push to align curriculum, we are, we are working hard to make sure that we balance alignment with this kind of innovative spirit that we have in Chapukah and trying to find the balance between those things. And we've just launched our GPS fellows. The first meeting of the GPS fellows will be this Wednesday. So GPS stands for the Graduate Positioning System and this is a way for us to work with some of our most forward-thinking and innovative teachers around what 21st century curriculum design looks like. And so I have a little bit of a trailer, I'm hoping I can play it and it has sound here. But we put together a little trailer to advertise internally with our staff what GPS is all about. So this was, this was just a short trailer to get them excited and have them apply to be a GPS fellow. Let's go back, let's see if we can. So that was an attempt to get our staff excited about curriculum.
And I just see Adam in like a superhero costume at the end of that.
That's going to have a negative impact.
That'd be perfect.
I want to know about that. Did you do that?
I did.
That video, okay.
I did.
Adam is a man of many challenges.
I did. I'm embarrassed to admit how long it took me to put together like a one-minute video or whatever, it's a minute and 29 seconds. But curriculum mapping has been something that educators have engaged in for a long time and curriculum maps are really built on a two-dimensional structure. So you always have to line something down the side and something across the top. Usually it's months across the top and then skills and content units. And this is a real push to think about curriculum in a much more dynamic way now that we have tools that can give us a curriculum that can be more interactive. So that's the real push. And so we wanted to get teachers excited about thinking about curriculum that way, that it's not just going to be the traditional mapping system. So we've got some great teachers and leaders signed up to be part of that and I think we really can push the thinking around curriculum design with that fellowship. So more on the fellowships in just a minute. I did want to touch on social emotional learning. We've got, although Dr. Ackerman is supporting and Dr. McCarthy are supporting the vast majority of this push, we do support a large component of the social emotional learning budget through the curriculum and instruction office. We have a fellowship going on right now for, to support the development of social emotional learning curriculum. We also have learning teams together, which is groups of teachers lighting, leading our ruler implementation. We have learning teams in each of the middle schools and also at Greeley. And then the plan is to expand that to the elementary schools next year. And we've also had a variety of conference day activities to support the professional development of teachers, including bringing in experts like Dr. Brackett from Yale, which we were able to do this year. So to touch on some of the professional learning components of the district, we are continuing to build on a really strong foundation of professional learning in the district and we've been pushing ourselves to rethink some of the professional development structures that we've used. So some of the shifts that we've been trying to emphasize are on the right with a hashtag PD done differently that we've started to use. We're starting to think about all teachers, our learners and leaders. We've been trying to align our professional development with progressive instructional practices, make it more personalized, priority focused, et cetera. And you can see on the left side, this is our summer save the date, we've been trying to work to restructure some of our summer professional developments. We're packaging professional development in clusters with the idea of being able to pull groups of teachers together to work on kind of theme-based professional development. So you can see we have a steam dot launch, kind of, you can think of it as a mini conference where we're going to bring in science teachers, math teachers, technology teachers, art teachers, music teachers, et cetera, and have them work on professional development in kind of clusters and groups. We think that'll help us not only make interdisciplinary connections, but also create some energy around those topics. So we continue to use many of these, all of these professional learning structures are familiar to you, but I put them out there just so you can see the depth of opportunity that our teachers and leaders and support staff have with regard to professional learning. And then I listed out some notable professional learning initiatives. Many of these are linked to the curriculum initiatives that we have from the last slide. And you can see things like professional development around the phonics program, early literacy, our global learning centers, et cetera. So you can start to see some connections there. So I did want to touch on the fellowships. We have the social emotional learning fellowship and the active reading and learning fellowship. Alf is, they are both going to continue for next year. We also have cohort two of Wilson, like Dr. McCarthy mentioned, and then we're just launching GPS. And we have a new fellowship that we hope to bring online at some point over the summer or early next year, which we're calling Shift 21: Shaping the Future of Teaching in the 21st Century. So that one has not started yet, but we've reserved some funds in the budget for that for next year. I also wanted to touch on leadership. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sananes because he's our, he has the vast majority of our leadership development, but again, it's funded through the curriculum and instruction office in most cases. So turn it over to Dr. Sananes to touch on these.
So we work on all this together. I would say the whole district leadership team works with the building leadership team to engage in their own professional learning, right? So it's really very much a priority. We know there's a lot of professional learning opportunities for our teachers, but we want to make sure that our building leaders are also engaged in learning. So we've done everything from book studies to conferences and institutes, strategic planning, our administrative council meetings, which we have once a month. We embed PD experiences within that as well. So we're together for two or three hours, at least an hour is dedicated to that. We have one-on-one coaching sessions, each of us at the building levels. We've also engaged in really meaningful learning walks across each building. At this point, we've been in each building, I think, once. And so it's allowed us to see what is going on across the district, inform our perspective and think about more professional learning moving forward, so.
Great, so I have a slide on assessment and feedback practices. Again, that was part of our strategic planning, strategic coherence planning process. And there are components in the budget that are going to fund the kind of advancing some of these initiatives as well. Continue to use K-4 literacy data to drive our professional development. Continue to subscribe to School Meter, which gives us a lot of data and Lyric Level One Data Clearinghouse, which gives us data around student performance so we can revise our curriculum. We have some money reserved for the implementation of a universal screener for next year, so you will hear more about that. But we're putting together a task force to review universal screeners that are out there. So you'll hear more, you'll hear more about universal screeners from me going forward, but we did put a, kind of a placeholder in the budget for some funding. That was a recommendation that came out of the strategic coherence plan as well. And then we have kindergarten screening update you got at the last, I think it was the last meeting, we did that screening update, so we reserved some money for ESGI, which is that program that we showed you last time. So, and we also, future work is to do some thinking about our K-4 report card. So instructional positions, last time it was mentioned, I believe that we have proposed this to the addition of a science research teacher into the budget. It's one of the professional teaching positions that we are asking the board seriously consider we're proposing. I have put some projections in here. Many of these numbers are students that already exist or were in the program, so you can see those, the actual columns. And then where it starts to get into the projected columns with the additional of this director of science research or this additional science research teacher, we can increase the number of sections. We're also recommending that we offer a chairperson stipend for a science research teacher, that's where that director of science research will come in. So in terms of budget impact, it will be one additional teacher and one additional chairperson stipend. And we really believe this will not only greatly increase opportunities for students to be able to participate in the program, because right now it's a very selective program with regard to the number of applicants and then the number of students that we can admit into the program. So this will significantly improve that. You can see the total number of students increase over time. The reason for the slow increase over time is because it's a cohort model. It takes some time when you have more capacity to roll in the increased class size as it, as the students roll in, if that makes sense. So what you're seeing in there is the number without the parentheses is the number of students and then with the parentheses is the number of sections that we would potentially offer. Again, it's projections, so that's our best guess as of right now. I just got some numbers the other day that we got, we have 62 student applicants for next year's science research program. So you can see that with a, with a number like 54, depending on the class size, we may be able to increase that. But depending on our class size that we set, it significantly increases our capacity and especially over time, access for students.
So this will be a full-time teacher who also has responsibility as director of science research?
Yeah, the-
Sort of like if you're a social studies teacher and you're chairman of the department.
Right, yeah. And that chairperson position, we have to do a little more thinking about that, but it could be open to somebody that is one of our teachers currently and takes on that. We have three teachers that are involved in the program right now. So we haven't made a decision if this new person will be the chairperson or one of our existing teachers, but yeah, that's-
But that's the concept of how you want to put it together. Are these prerequisites? You have to take introduction before you can do science and events?
You do, yes.
May I ask, just quickly, what, the acceptance rate, like how is that determined right now? In terms of, is it, is it a flat number that we take?
There is a number and then there's also- There is a number, and then there's also some criteria, there's an application process that's.
Right, I just didn't know if it was a number that we can, like, we can only handle X number of students.
It is, it's based on, you know, we've been trying to gather some information from the region with regard to the right number, you can see over time on the projections that we've got, in their final year, Advanced Science Research, all the way to the right, I think of that column as like the stabilized program that would then be those numbers going forward, we've got four sections of 48, what we're hearing from the teachers is that to shoot 12 is like a magic number, 15 is a max number, is what we're hearing from the teachers, so, the reason that those numbers are small is because it's really intensive, individualized, personalized work, we were, we had some students here recently that might want an award, it's been a very successful program, but it really is very depersonalized work, and the students all participate in these, you know, outside work with.
Right, and over the summers and stuff, right.
Practicing sciences, there's summer work, there's after-school work, et cetera, so for teachers to be able to mentor individual kids in that way, we try to really be careful about the class size.
Right, okay.
Because if you look at this, you have a 50% reduction, right, in 20, 1920, 50% reduction? Oh, I guess not, you gotta go the other way, I'm sorry.
Right, so you're reading that kind of diagonally in prostrate, so the students, like, the 29 number becomes a 27, and that's why it takes a few years for us to increase capacity with a new teacher, so.
No, I understand, but that other, that section opens up a lot, so, okay.
Ultimately, if it's about 16% of any grade, what we do is 50 out of 300?
It was 10%.
So, so last year, we had 65, I think, applicants for 30 spots.
Right.
So we made some decisions to open up class size, which is why we have 42 instead of 30 actual this year.
Right.
So when thinking about how to plan moving forward, we felt that this was a way to give access to more kids, but also address the concerns with increasing.
Right, cuz that's a big class, 42 for two teachers, yeah, okay, so, all right.
So we went from 10% to 15%, basically. All right, our classes are about 300-plus kids, so if you're saying 30, that's 10%, now you go to 48, 15, there, high level.
Right, right, so one way to look at it is to think about the percentage of the class, another way to look at it is to go from the actual, this year, of 98 students being able to participate in total, and you go out a few years and we're up to 153, so that's a, you know, that's a pretty marked increase in that way. So on a somewhat related note, I'm gonna stay within kind of the STEAM region, I don't have a separate slide for it, but we're also making the recommendation of a chairperson position for the new STEAM center that's going to be opening up at Greeley, so, and we also have recommended in the budget, placed in the budget, a chairperson for kind of a STEAM center coordinator position, that would be a chairperson stipend attached to a teacher that would oversee that new facility, manage the supplies, the equipment, the budget, the spaces, making sure the machines are.
Tony, that's for the, for the high school?
For the high school, yeah.
What about the, the middle school STEAM centers? Would they have the same, same issues that would lead you to get a chairperson?
Yeah, they're, we had some dialogue about that, we had some conversations about that, where we landed in the end with the middle schools is we wanted to get in the spaces, they're within the same building, they're not a separate building, we felt like Greeley had some things that were, that made it unique with regard to it being a separate building in a separate space, and we just, we felt like with the situation at Greeley and the amount of supplies, the machines that are gonna be in there, the level of maintenance of those machines, safeties, et cetera, we just felt like Greeley was the place, if we were gonna have one, to have it there, and we were going to move into those middle school spaces, live in those middle school spaces a little bit, use the existing staff that we have, and see how it goes, and we may be back next year to say we really need a, you know, some kind of coordinator position, but we thought that for now, this would be the best course of action.
Is the goal to allow any student that wants to participate to participate, or is there always gonna be some sort of criteria or hurdle to get into the class?
So I, I believe the goal is to allow any student who'd like to participate in science research that has the capacity to be able to participate into the class, there's certain, there's certain appropriateness associated with being able to work independently within that classroom setting that doesn't work for everybody, but the idea is, let's open up enrollment to get as many students in there as possible.
Do we think that the addition that you're suggesting here is going to be enough to meet that goal?
I think it depend, we have to review the applicants, but I think it's a step in that direction. I can't see us adding another position to the budget to increase class sections in science research, but I could see us reducing a course somewhere else to open up another section.
Within the next year, or do you think that's more of a long term?
It depends on the applicant number for this year, so let's say we have a different science class with only eight students in it, it might not make sense to run that, it might make sense to run another section of science research, but that wouldn't impact the budget, that's why that, we're not talking about that right now.
Do you, do you think that the numbers of students that have been applying has been influenced by knowing how many spots there are, do you think, and I'm wondering if you're gonna get a flood of applicants?
So in the course catalog, there wasn't a required prerequisite, and the number of applicants aren't that far off from last year's number of applicants.
Okay.
But that might not, that might change as more students enroll in the program, and we could see an influx of applicants for next year, not, the next.
Right. Our hope is also to continue to ensure that the program thrives, and we know that with success, you know, more students will wanna be participating in it, and to continue to hire teachers that are, like, really exciting and charismatic and the kids wanna be around, so the hope is that we can pull somebody in here that really has some good experience with science research, and that, it's a great problem to have, that more kids wanna be a part of the program, and then we'll have to figure that out, right?
We're trying to move into a more inclusive atmosphere here where we allow kids to challenge themselves, that's why we opened up enrollment in all of our AP courses, and with the exception of required prerequisites, because work is scaffolded, we're allowing kids to self-select if they'd like to enter into AP courses, provided they've met the prerequisites, cuz we really believe in that, and the high school team has worked over two years to be in that place, so I think this aligns directly with that philosophy, which I know the Board of Education has supported, so.
So the next slide is our other additions that you will see in the budget, we have already, these positions have already been approved by the board, and they exist as teachers in the district already, but we had to, we're gonna put, we had to put them in the budget based on the timing of when we ended up having to add them as positions, so I did wanna give you, these are both ENL teachers, we've changed the acronym to English as, or we haven't, the state changed the acronym to English as a new language, so you hear ENL, and these are ENL teachers, and our level of ENL services is prescribed by the state, and it's based on the student's performance on a test called the NICE SLAT test, and the NICE SLAT test will designate students' levels, you can see the levels up there, a couple proficiency levels, and based on a student's score, the proficiency level, they are required a certain minimum number of instructional minutes, and there's actually some, some guidelines or regulations around how many of those minutes are push-in support, and how many of those minutes are pull-out support, et cetera, so it's, it's more complex than just how many students do we have in the program, it's also how many minutes and what level of proficiency are they, because you need staff to be able to support the students you have with regard to their proficiency levels, there's also regulations around groupings of students in various grade levels that are grouped together, et cetera, so it's a really complex picture, the long story short is that with the addition of, we, from what I understand, the district added a position in 2017, 18, and also one in 2018, 19, that was one that was recently on the board agenda and recently hired, so that puts us in a position where we're really able to serve our students that are learning English, you can see the numbers and how they've changed over time, in many cases, this is a population of students where the, the number is, it moves up and down quite a bit over the course of the year, and so that, just as an example, we did a little research on that number, that's the 71 there, and we found that five of those students didn't take the NICE SLAT because they didn't stay in the district through the whole year, so the NICE SLAT's given in the, in the spring, so that number was actually, depending on when you, what time during the year you count that number, bed stay was 71, which is that day we talked about before where we count students, but later in the year, we don't even have NICE SLAT scores cuz they moved out of the district, so that 71 is a little bit further down, but the 76 students are what we have right now, in terms of students that we support, we followed that trend line out a little bit, we think we're projecting about 79, we should be fine with the teachers that we have now, but you'll see them as they add in the budget because they weren't in the budget last year and when we developed it.
So this, this is like a moving target for us, because someone could come in who's never been in the country before with multiple kids, and then that could cause us to have to increase a staff member, so, so when we think about how to support ENL, it's, this is one of those situations where you have to have extra funding in the budget in order to respond as families come into the district.
And is there a requirement as to fluency, the teacher's fluency in the student's first language?
Nope, it's just certification as an ENL teacher, and the strategies that they use should be able to apply across multiple languages, I mean, ideally, it would be great if we had our teachers who are ENL that could speak native language, but that's not always the case because so many different countries are coming in and out of.
Do we know how many languages are represented in our district?
I didn't bring that data with me, but I did look at it, and it's a very diverse group, we bring, we have students from all over the world, and in many cases, they're not big clusters, they're, you know, they're just individual ones, two, three students, and they're spread throughout the district, so, they also come in with a variety of kind of educational levels and experiences, some of them come in with interrupted education, and others come in with very rich experiences in education, but they have not learned English, right, so, so we've gotta support them, so there's, there's a variety of levels of students that we're working with to support, the good news is, is students learn languages pretty quickly, especially when they're immersed in the language, so in many cases, within a couple of years, our students can move through the, through the levels, and out of ENL, but you can also see that side note that we have to, we continue, I shouldn't say have to, we get to support students for two years after they're through the program and continue to access.
And how are they spread through, throughout the grade levels, is it mostly the younger grade levels, or, and you may not have.
I do, I brought it, I brought it, we've got, right now, we currently have, we, many more at our elementary schools, just, I have some numbers from the other day, we have 14 students that are ENL at Grafflin, eight at Roaring Brook, 25 at West Orchard, and then as you get up into Bell, you have 10 at Bell, nine at Seven Bridges, and 10 at Greeley.
Are this staff that are certified for this, like, for K through 12, or?
Yes, it's a K through 12 certification.
Oh, so you don't have to worry about it shifting.
Right.
So do you see that number going down as the kids get older because they've gone from entering to commanding, or is it because, I know you probably have the answers, is it because we have more families moving in with children at the younger ages?
I think it's both, right, it's, it's more students moving in in the elementary schools, the good news is that having that larger number at the elementary schools, elementary students learn language really fast, right, that's a, that's a time of great language growth, so, so those students will likely, you know, make great gains as they go through, and it's unlikely that they'll continue to be ENL students with support once they hit Greeley, especially if they're in the younger grades now.
So why don't we, why don't we offer, and this is off-subject, why don't we offer foreign language in the elementary schools?
Well, we.
Sorry.
So I would say that, that would be a.
You've just made a great case for offering.
That would be a significant increase to the budget, so if that's something you want us to talk about moving into planning for 2021, we can certainly do that, but that would be a significant increase to our FTEs.
If you're staying below the task gap, it's just not gonna work.
But it's certainly something, in our strategic planning discussions, in terms of instruction, that was one curricular piece that was very specifically raised by our community, but based on our budgetary restrictions, it wasn't something that we were even thinking about proposing in this particular budget, cuz we'd have to do all three elementary schools at one time.
I didn't mean specifically for this project, I meant the concept of moving toward that.
There's a lot of research that supports having foreign language in the elementary schools, not only for language development, but in terms of whole brain development for our kids, so we can certainly for next year, talk about having conversations around what that would mean for our, our budget process, so.
On, on that note, do we know what the other districts that we compare ourselves to, do they offer foreign language in their district?
We can get that information for you, we don't have that prepared for tonight, but we can certainly look at that.
Thank you.
What happened?
That machine just shut down.
Oh, we were going too long, that's why.
I know, I think I timed out.
Okay, we made it, okay, back, here we go, sorry, everybody.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
All right, so, so this is, shows you the detail of the, our post-curriculum budget with regard to research planning and evaluation, and also curriculum development, and if I can highlight a few pieces of it, you'll see an increase in both research and testing, the reason that those are increasing is because we wanted to work in some funding for ESGI, which you heard about at the last meeting with regard to kindergarten screening, and also, so we have some funds for a universal screener, which we're putting together that task force for, so you see an increase in those numbers. The small increase that you see in equipment is because we have, you know, just small instructional equipment components, we had to borrow some money from John for some new chairs for a professional development conference room, for example, so small expenditures come up, and we wanted to have a little bit of equipment money, so we built a little bit more money in there. Down below, you'll see an increase in supplies, the professional development that we've been being, that we've been providing is increasingly active, so we've been using up more expendable supplies, so we increased our supply line on there, which you can see down towards the bottom, and you'll see a decrease in the line for BOSEs we've been doing, and increased amount of professional development through the district and relying less on BOSEs, so you see a decrease in that, I expect that trend to move forward, and you'll see a decrease in that BOSEs line, that's it. If you go on to the, to the next slide, you can see that there's a small decrease in the elementary science program, the elementary science curriculum is shifting, we subscribe to Science 21 through Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOSEs, and we buy science kits through them, but the program is changing, so we anticipate spending a bit less on elementary science supplies, most of the supplies we get come with the program, but there are some expendables, live organisms, things like that that we buy, and we expect that to go down a bit, and then you can see a decrease in the gifted program, we really, we use those funds, we don't have a separate standalone gifted program, we use those funds for some enrichment activities that we provide for students within the instructional program, so you can see the overall budget for regular school is decreasing by $7,500. On the final slide, you'll see the overall, just a summary of the previous two slides, and you'll see the overall total curriculum and instruction budget remains almost, almost level, a small increase of $500 in the whole budget, so that's a summary.
Adam, I may have missed this now, why is it that our reliance on BOSEs is decreasing?
BOSEs provides quite a bit of professional development, and we have pretty, pretty robust professional development systems in-house, so we tend to, we're sending our teachers to BOSEs less than, than we have, and we believe that trend is gonna continue.
And I'm just curious, is that because of all the movements we're making that similar school districts are also, are also making, I mean, are school districts moving in a certain direction and BOSEs is perhaps not following, I mean, are we, no, really, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get at, because, you know, we're, we're a part of BOSEs, we talk a lot about our BOSEs expenditures, and we would like them to, to meet our needs, so if there's a way to get them to do that, if several districts are moving in a separate direction, I think that they would have to know that.
Right.
And perhaps understand that, I mean, it's a trend, so they, they're, they're, we're a component district, so I, I think that they have to work to serve their component districts.
Right, they do offer.
This is not really for you, this is really for us.
I was gonna say, this is usually my role to grip on BOSEs.
Yeah, but it's up to us to, to let them know that they need to make some changes in that, in that regard, and I don't know.
They, they do provide some services that are really strong and important for us, Dr. McCarthy just went today to meet with some guidance leaders around the development of the K-12 Comprehensive Counseling Plan, so that was really positive that they pulled in people from the whole region and provide some resources, and it was an opportunity to share information, so we do participate in many of those kinds of programs, they are not in a place right now where they're able to support us in something like moving into a full STEAM facility, and moving into the work where we're doing ENL, really progressive thinking about teaching and learning, they, I don't know that regionally, they have the same kind of push that we have right now, so they're just not able to support that, or they choose not to, and so we've, we've been providing a lot of our own in-house support, or having our teachers attend other things outside of the BOSEs region, and our leaders attend other things outside of the BOSEs regions to make sure that we're continuing to provide that really progressive professional development.
Okay, and in terms of the professional learning for the STEAM labs that are coming online, do you feel that we have sufficient resources for that, and, so I, I noticed you have a lot of opportunities there in your summer camps and with some of the offerings that you, that you show. of the offerings that you, that you showed in one of the slides.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm wondering, does that capture a good number of the teachers who would be, who'd be moving into those spaces?
Yeah, I think, we've been doing STEAM, this is a tribute to Josh and his team and others, that they've been doing STEAM professional development, design thinking professional development for years. And so I think our teachers are very ready, they're equipped, we continue that march. We, we, we're ready for those spaces to be open.
Right, I'm asking specifically because they're about, they're about to open.
We have the resources in this budget to be able to fund in-service courses, learning teams, book studies. We'll continue to support it on our superintendent conference days. We have a superintendent conference day this Friday, which, which you're aware of, and we've got several STEAM offerings, symposiums that we're offering through Josh and the team. So, so we're, we're ready to, we're ready to continue to support the teachers through the professional development over the summer and also the curriculum support, writing the curriculum. The challenge right now is to continue to maintain that level of energy and excitement and get the teachers into those spaces. We need to, the sooner we can get those spaces open, the better off we'll be, because the hope is that, we had talked quite a while ago about the, how the construction project has to merge with the professional development timeline and that the space opens just when teachers are peaking and leaders are peaking and ready to move into those spaces. So that's the goal.
Right.
Should I advance to the thank you slide, because I'm not, the computer decided to do something.
So I have no questions for you, Adam.
Yes.
I mean, we've spent a lot of money in the last year or so, and not even money, a lot of energy on people's time, doing the strategic plan. And I can sort of see how your presentation and how your view on how you put this together aligns with the strategic plan. So thank you very much, because it shows that we're all moving in the same direction and everything's following where it's supposed to go.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I will say that I'm fortunate to be able to sit here and report for a, a big team of really strong people. So there's a lot of good thinking that goes into this budget in the buildings, building leaders, teachers, professional development team, Josh Heide, Jamie Edelman, and then this, this crew as well. So I get to present a lot of this stuff, but really this is a, this is a whole army of people that support this end of the district.
But the district's taken on this whole idea of strategic plan and it's nice to see that it's flowing down into what we're trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Army 15.
Josh, you ready?
Uh, yeah. Hold Josh, while you change, go ahead. Are there any comments that anyone would like to make regarding curriculum? Okay, Josh.
So Josh will be, thank you, Adam. So Josh will be sharing the proposed technology budget for next year.
Let's hope the technology works for this presentation.
Yeah, let's see. Okay, evening, everybody. So we have had an extremely successful year. We've implemented one-to-one laptops in fifth and sixth grade, one-to-one iPads in third and fourth grade. We're installing new displays throughout the school district. We opened our global learning centers at our elementary schools, we're in the process of construction, constructing spaces in our middle and high schools and implementing learning management systems throughout our school district. Any one of these would be an overwhelming task for a school district to implement about digital learning goals, but we, we are doing it and it's going extremely well and we look forward to continuing this work into the next school year. And I think as you're hearing tonight with both Heidi and Adam's presentations, technology is becoming more and more meshed with all aspects of the school district. So we have our technology vision and we are making one little change to it, which is that we're going to continually improve our secure and private infrastructure to support advanced district instructional visions and goals. This is really important for a few reasons. One is, as we become more connected, both cybersecurity and cyber safety is paramount for our students, as well as new privacy laws and regulations that are being passed down as part of ED2D from New York State and FERPA revisions that are going to come from the federal government. But it is extremely important that we keep our students and our staff and our faculty and our district safe and secure in all aspects of the work that we do. There are multiple components that go into a technology budget. At the center of it, though, is our innovative teaching and learning. Professional learning, our data, our infrastructure, all of that intersect to create the learning environment that we have with our student. So leading with our, our teaching and learning, just a quick why, right? It is extremely important that we create environments and digital learning for our students as they move throughout our school system and into the future. One, I toured a WeWork office a few weeks ago and they are on pace to be the largest office supplier in the United States within the next two to three years. And their offices are widely different structures than we would consider a traditional office space. And our spaces really mimic that we're building, mimic the work that our students are going to use and the technology that we're using mimics that as well. But as a district, we need to be teaching our students how to be future citizens, have media literacy, have digital citizenship and to be, use a variety of different types of technologies and skills so that as they get into college and career, we know that we have well-prepared them. We have worked to continue our K-12 STEAM work and what we're starting to see in our school now is students really thinking and creating, right? Creating and going through our design process is really a great equalizer for all students. It creates low floor and high ceiling opportunities. One thing that I'd like to highlight over the past few weeks, and Adam tweeted about it, was that Mike DeBellas, his students came to him and said, hey, over February break, we've got fish in these tanks, what's going to happen to them? And he says, well, I don't know, figure out how to feed them over break. And those students, over the course of a really short amount of time, created an automatic feeder for these students from scratch with the parts that were in his classroom and they, I, I didn't follow up to make sure they were alive, but I presume that they were. So, but these are the types of things that we like to see our students do and that project really internalizes the design process that students go through. They saw a problem, they created a solution for it and then they constructed that solution and then they got to reflect after break, right, whether the fishes, the fish lived. And we're really starting to make advances in our computer science curriculum in K through 12. This year, we started implementing our K4 Everyone Can Code curriculum from Apple, which our teachers are saying, we can't believe how integrated this is with the work that we're doing and how easy this is to do, which is one of the, always the sticking point with computer science education, is that faculty who are not digital natives tend to have trouble conceptualizing what computer science is. And we're really seeing a lot of gains in that work. We have our three learning goals and these mimic exactly what Adam had showed as our vision and goals. Just the last one really is there to start driving our systems and our network for learning and really say, okay, we need to create a digital learning environment that is efficient, always on, students have ready access to that work. These goals and our accompanying indicators really drive our technology initiatives, our instruction and the evaluation of our programs. We are creating active learning spaces and one of the things as part of our design process, which creates a process that students through C-K through 12, so that they could start their thinking processes, our active learning spaces that we're building provide similar consistency. So they're all, as we're building them, this is the map of the Bell STEAM space, have a subset of production areas and work areas and lounge areas and flexible space where students can group themselves, work individually, work in small groups, work in large group, present, all the modes of instruction and all the modes of learning that are really important for students. And the technology that these spaces should really seem, be seamless and integrate directly into the space without students even thinking about it. We opened our global learning centers and I just put a little montage of pictures up there. We have seen students sitting on their iPads, reading digital books in small nooks in these spaces. We've seen them in the maker spaces building, we've seen them doing research, we've seen them doing things that we never imagined would have been possible in these spaces and they're so flexible that obviously everybody is flocking towards these spaces to use them. And we're really starting to make a real great advances in it. And as Adam mentioned, his curriculum budget, we're looking to revise our K4 library curriculum so that we could even take further advantage of it and incorporate computer science, engineering, making and global research and literacy into that curriculum. Another component that to talk about is our one-to-one initiative. We, last year started planning, had, making sure that students have ubiquitous access to devices so that when they need it, they could just flip them on and they could use them and it could really start to advance our digital learning goals. This year, our, we rolled out grades three and grade four iPads. That initiative has been more successful than I would have and, or we ever would have imagined. We have seen classrooms in third and fourth grade be transformed with research and with portfolio building and with literacy and with accessing just write text for students and also about media creation. We see kids in front of green screens, creating videos of the work that they just did and reflecting on it and all the things that we value in such a seamless way and things that are going to, they're going to take with them into the following school years. And that's why, so for next year, we're going to be implementing grade two with one-to-one iPads and also to finish out our K1 curriculum. So that's, part of that is with district budget, the other that, part of that is with the smart schools bond that we're still awaiting approval for from the state. In fifth and sixth grade, we implemented laptops, PC laptops in fifth and sixth, and we're going to talk more about that on the next slide. And we piloted a BYOD for our seventh and eighth grade and in the high school, we just continued to roll out our BYOD process. The BYOD in the high school, we're seeing around 70% of students actually bringing laptops to school. I met with the student council the other day because what we're seeing is students borrowing laptops is a lot higher than 30% and we're wondering why. And what they said is that they're just dying in the middle of the day their laptops because they're forgetting to charge them. So what we built into the budget for next year actually is purchasing chargers for students that they could check out of the library and charging stations, these big tower charging stations that we could put throughout the school in a safe way so students can charge their devices. Along with changing the method of, right now, they grab a laptop when they need it and they put it back. We're going to have them check it out as if they're checking out a book from the library at various points in the school in the morning. So students that don't have a laptop, they can check it out, they've got it for the day and they can return it at the end of the school day. But the student council seemed to think that if we could get charging down, we'd see a lot less students using our, the district laptops during the day. So we'll, we'll see if the, the data supports that next year. Along with that, we're starting to look at increasing our bandwidth and our Wi-Fi for the next school year. So I want to talk about our middle school one-to-one project. This year, we used our smart school funds, bonds to purchase back atlases. Those devices were promised to be durable and so I stood up here, I said, they are really durable, I put them against a desk, well, here's what it turned out. The company has gone out of business and their last batch of devices that they've created were not as durable as the ones that we had used. The good news with all of that is that we did not purchase these devices directly from back, we purchased them from Microsoft. So when we're getting broken backs, they're replacing them with Surface Go's for us. So those devices are iPad-like and they have a soft keyboard and we've been putting a hard shell case around them. We've been tracking the breakage rate of these Surface Go's and it, we've only seen two screen cracks of the 6D that we've done, which is well below what we would estimate a breakage rate would be for the time that students have it. So for next year, for fifth and sixth grade, we're going to be taking out all the working backs. We're going to use those as loners at the high school, so they're not going to take them home, so there should be less breakage. We're sending back all the ones that Microsoft will replace for us because it's, it goes by the amount of warranties that we purchased with them and they're going to replace them with Surface Go's and then we're going to fill out the rest of fifth and sixth grade with Surface Go's. The, and, and so these are iPad-like devices, they are backed by Microsoft, Microsoft has assured us that they are not going out of business.
It's got a Windows-based operating system.
It's a Windows, it's a Windows-based operating system and the students will have the option to boot it into a mobile mode or into a full mode. So depending on how, depending on how the need of the program that they're running, so they'll be able to have a quicker version just for word processing and drawing on a screen and things like that. But if they're going to use, let's say, the Adobe Creative Cloud, then they could boot it into a full mode that they have. For seventh and eighth grade, we piloted a BYOD. We got, we, we just finished the evaluation of it probably about a week and a half ago and we are only seeing around 10 to 15% of our students bringing laptops into school in seventh and eighth grade. I went to the sixth grade Wiser classes and spoke to all of those students over the past few days or, and, and said like, well, first I talked to them about the Surface Go's and we showed it and they were very happy with that change and then I asked them about, what do they think if they were asked to bring their laptops to school? And most of them said they would prefer, they, they said, my parents probably would prefer me not to bring my own laptop to school, sixth graders. And I went to three math classes of seventh and eighth graders and they said that their parents would prefer them not to bring laptops to school in kid-friendly language. So one of the things that's a discussion point for the board, we just finished this up about a week and a half ago, so you're not going to see numbers for this in my, in my plan. Our original plan had BYOD for seventh and eighth grade, but a preference would be to outfit the seventh and eighth graders with Surface Go's as well. So the con of that is that there's an initial cost. The pro of it, what we've now done, if we have five through eighth grade all with the same device, is we created a contained environment in our middle school. So that can allow teachers, which is a piece that our teachers have said, that students with different types of devices, it is still difficult for them to teach digital, use digital learning with, if one kid's got a Mac and one's got an iPad and one's got a Surface. In seventh, in the high school, the, the applications they're using are very virtual-based and very web-based and it's been easy for them to do that. In the middle school, they're using some smart notebook software and there's some software that they like loaded on that they don't have that. So, so we had, would have a full contained environment in our fifth through eighth grade and we could do a real push around professional development around the Surface Go's with teachers and what digital learning looks like and what it looks like to create online worksheets and personalized learning and the two technology and personalization goals that we have for our school district. So that to me is something that I would like to bring with you that is outside of the scope of this budget, but as a discussion point for the board to think about as an addition to the technology budget.
What, what is the actual dollar amount?
So the dollar amount for seventh and eighth grade would be a sum total of $433,456. If we lease that over four years, it's $112,000 per year.
Per year.
Per year, right. And that includes the devices, interest, insurance. It also, that's the other thing to note, these, that also includes full insurance for the devices, so the district would pick up breakage for all the Surface Go's going forward, rather than have, yeah, loss theft, that would, that's all included in the extended Microsoft agreement that we have.
What were the numbers again, Josh?
So the sum total is $433,455. And then as a lease, that comes out to $112,758.
So you're saying that this year's budget would, would go up by the 112?
Correct.
For this year's, for every year?
Right, it would, for the next four years.
What kind of lease is it?
Right.
It's a full payout.
It's a full payout, four-year lease, correct.
It wouldn't go up by the, every year, it'd go up once.
Once. It would go, right, right. It would go up once and it'd be a consistent amount.
Oh, okay, that, that wouldn't be an increase, we're just going up by, okay.
No, no, right, yeah. It wouldn't be, it would be an increase for next school year, but it wouldn't be for the following school year.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Do we, do we own the equipment at the end of the lease?
We do own the equipment at the end of the lease so that we can then go.
It's a B-dollar lease, dollar buyer at the end of the lease.
That's exactly right.
And will the technology be okay? And will the technology be okay in four years?
So we're saying that, so next year, the increase will be $112,000.
Yep.
And the budget-to-budget increase will be increased from 2.84% to 2.93%. And the tax levy will be from, increase from 0.84% to 0.94%.
The tax levy would go up by 112,000.
Right.
By how many households?
It's a 0.1% increase.
So the question is, in four years, where does this technology stand? I mean, you know.
Yeah, so these, in four years, will work over four years, right? They're Microsoft Surfaces, they're backed by Microsoft, they have four-year warranties on them. At the end of four years, there still will be value in them, probably not much value. As a district, we'd probably go sell them back at the end of those four years, and not give it a fifth year. But if we have the lease, we'd purchase new ones at that point, right? So we'd cycle through over four years.
Because it's in the budget already, so there won't be a budget increase.
And these are laptops that remain in the buildings?
We, for, for fifth through eighth grade, kids take them home. So that then their homework environment is the same as their, their schoolwork environment.
And is all the data information they need within this device, or they need internet connectivity?
They'll need, for the most part, they'll need internet connectivity, yeah.
I like that it's an integrated program within the middle schools. Like a four-year, sort of integrated, consistent device that would help the programming be consistent. And is that, that's what you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, and that's the goal, right? And that would create the, that would allow us to increase the use of digital learning for our students in our middle school. It would allow us to differentiate more, allow us to personalize, allow us, and so that we have a constant, right? So we don't have all these variables floating around the school.
Right, would that make it easier to integrate the curriculum?
Yeah, much easier, significantly.
You know, five through eight curriculum.
So what we're seeing when we walk around the middle school is our fifth and sixth graders using technology, and our seventh and eighth graders using it inconsistently. And our kids aren't bringing computers in, like we anticipated. But now that my, one of my children is going into seventh grade, I don't know if I'd want to give him a laptop going to school next year, so I have a better understanding of what's happening here. So I think if we want the level of technology to increase with our seventh and eighth grade students, there has to be a consistent expectation that that technology will be with them throughout the school day. And the only way to do that, we believe through our extensive conversations, is to provide that device for them. Where we don't need to do that, really, because our kids come in with their own devices. But we didn't want to just place this in the budget, because last year, we, we said it would be bring your own device, seventh and eighth grade, bring your own device. But based on what we're seeing, that's not going to work the way that we want them to, which is why we're suggesting that we purchase computers for everybody five through eight.
I'm glad that you did this, because it just, it does not surprise me that the data landed there. It doesn't. And I think that the kids make a leap from high school in terms of taking care of their belongings, treating computers a certain way. But I also am in favor of the consistency from five to eight. If we can do it, I think that's a terrific idea, to help them from a curricular standpoint, as well as a personal belonging standpoint.
I don't know at what point in the budget process we should approve this, but I would support this.
Yeah.
So we'll put it in the final budget presentation.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm pretty sure you spoke to my sixth grader. And he told you what I told him.
He gave you an earful.
Holly and I have experience in the field.
Right, I know.
Wholeheartedly support this decision.
But speaking of-
I think we all do.
Yes, we do, we've been there, yes.
Not surprised at all, these are.
But speaking of experience, have you thought about chargers in the middle schools like you were talking about at the high school?
Yes, so these are USBC, which are a standard charger. So we can pick up chargers really inexpensively. And put them throughout the middle school, for, yeah, for students to charge their devices in their classroom, especially with our flexible learning spaces. You know, Adam was talking about, he's like, "I really need like a battery for my, you know," and we, you know, we know we move furniture to plug in in our offices, right? Students are going to do that in classrooms also, so.
Right. And I guess maybe it was with the Back Atlases, but, you know, if the computer didn't get fully charged overnight, it was a problem the next day, so I'd like to, I like that these are more flexible as well.
Yeah. So moving on to professional learning, I think Adam touched a lot about this. And one of the things that I really want to mention about professional learning is that this year, in particular, we've really collaborated with the curriculum and instruction department, and I think that we have made it so that professional learning, for technology, is just immersed with our curriculum, professional learning. Well, you'll see it across two budgets, but the Active Learning Leader Fellows, the Collaborative Teaching Fellows, the Advanced Technology Fellows, Heidi mentioned all of the technology projects that are getting done with the K-Fellows. We absolutely started immersing it with the group. We have a group, we have two staff developers that are predominantly for technology. We also had an Apple consultant in with us for a good portion of the year. We also use a custom BOSIS program, where they have multiple staff developers that have expertise from Lyric, that come up and work with our teachers in certain, when needed, to fill in as part of the things that we need. We're starting to, a really tiered approach, we're starting to build mastery within ourselves around Apple. Ellen Moskowitz, our staff developer, and I, next week are going to be in Austin at Apple's education, their headquarters, to start to, at their Apple Academy, to start to develop curriculum, develop coding curriculum, and become master Apple professional developers, so that we can now turnkey, as Adam was talking about, building our in-house professional development, so that in the future years, we don't have as a reliance of consultants and BOSIs, which is really important. Our infrastructure, none of this would work without our infrastructure, and we have to continually improve and continually build. So I want to talk about something that we're, a couple of things we're doing with our infrastructure. The first thing is, we're replacing most of our Wi-Fi access points over the next two years. We started at Seven Bridges last week, and the, the, so to put it, we had access points that had two antennas, and the new ones have eight antennas. The ones that we're putting in can cover 500 devices, where the other ones can cover 25 devices.
Oh, wow.
The, the technology in the past two years has gone, gotten a lot faster and a lot cheaper. So that's why we're allowed to start replacing that. So you're going to see places like the gym have increased Wi-Fi for a lot more people in the auditorium, in a lot of the spaces where lots of people congregate, as well as we're budgeting that every student has two to three devices on them at any one given time, connected to our Wi-Fi access point, which is really what we're seeing. And if we look at our usage of what's connected, we could look at a classroom and see 70 devices connected to an access point. Kids are carrying Apple watches that have cell service on it and Wi-Fi service, phones and a laptop. So you're getting, and that's only going to increase as time goes on. And we want to make sure that we support that within our curriculum and instructions. We want to make sure that our Wi-Fi infrastructure can handle that. We are also redoing this summer our WAN around our schools. Currently, we have 1 gigabit per second from school to school. And then we're, this summer, we're going to upgrade that to 10 gigabits per second. It's also going to provide redundancy in both directions. This year, we had some fiber cuts that really impacted instruction, and when our network goes down, instruction does stop, right? And at this point, so we need to make sure that we have redundant access. So in both directions, the slide that I have up there has a ring that goes around the school. So if there's a cut, we can go in the other direction, and everything is good. You can't see the red lines as well, but the blue is our wide area network. There's one red line that's going from Greeley down to White Plains, that's our internet access. Last year, it was 600 gigabits per second, megabits per second. This year, it was 1 gigabit per second, we're maxing that out. So we're going to go up to 2 gigabits per second next year. We're also adding a redundant internet access. So in case that line goes out, you can see there's another red line that goes to Mount Kisco. And so, so that if our internet goes out going down to White Plains, we have a redundant that's going to Mount Kisco. You might ask, why wouldn't Mount Kisco be closer, be the one that would be our main one? The speed that's in that central office is a lot slower than if it goes straight down to White Plains.
Should we go from 1 to 2 gigabits per second? Is that just something that our provider can do on their end, or is that something we have to do on it?
Yeah, so it's both, actually. So our provider has to change out all of the equipment, for, the provider needs to change out all of the equipment for our WAN, going from 1 gigabit per second to 10 gigabit per second. The internet, they could just flip a switch for it to go from 1 to 2. But we need to add another device at Seven Bridges to go to have the redundant access.
And what's the cost between 1 to 2 and 2 to 4?
So, well, so from 1 to 2 to 2 to 4 is about $8,000 per month right now. To go from 1 gigabit to 2 gigabit per second is actually, our, our total bill per month is $7,000, and that's going to go to 10, $11,000 next year, which is something that, but-
So 1 to 2 goes basically $7,000.
Yeah, about that.
Increase.
No, $4,000.
No, so it's $4,000 per month increase, so it's a $48,000.
Oh, it's $7,000 now, it's going to 11?
Right, exactly, yeah.
And what if we, what if we bump that again, what would that cost?
So the cost for that would be, A, about $100,000 in equipment fees over that, because to utilize the 4 gigabit per second feed into our schools, we would have to change almost our entire architecture at this moment. So we're starting to build that in, because our firewall can only handle 2 gigabit per second, our filter can only handle 2 gigabit per second, and those are the maxes for those two devices. And the ones that can handle the 4 gigabit per second are much more expensive. So we're looking over time, hoping that those, as this, these costs have decreased, that-
That will drop down, down the road.
Right, and I'm going to be honest, the truth of the matter is, most physical devices can't handle that speed.
I'm just talking about future.
Yeah, so, so being future-ready is changing our wide area network switches, so that they can handle 100 gigabits per second, which is what we're doing. We're only getting 10 from them, but they're going to go up to 100. And then, when our firewall expires, get a new firewall that can handle higher speeds in a couple of years.
When's that expire?
So we're in the second year, and it's got two more years, it's a four-year lease on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so we looked at all of that to say, what's the best thing, what makes the most sense? What's the usable speeds, what's the throughput?
I figured, I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, 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 no, it's a good question to ask. And that's all, a lot of that comes from E-Rate, so some of that comes from federal funds, and some of that comes from our district funds. Our communications, two things that we're adding to that. We just, last week, all of our administrators have a Zoom video conferencing account, and we're starting to build Zoom rooms in all of our new spaces that we're building, so that students and faculty and administration can start to have a really robust video conferencing system, so that we can start to bring, really easily bring experts in to work with our students. For me, selfishly, it's, I'm hoping that I don't have to go drive to Seven Bridges, then to Bell, and then to Roaring Brook, and back to the Ed Center in a day, that we could start to really take advantage of video conferencing in the district, so that our transportation is less, and that we spend more productive time.
I use a Zoom room every day, it's terrific.
Yeah, it's the best product out there of all the video conferences that we, that we looked at. So, and we're going to pilot, in the Ed Center, professional development. We're putting a Huddle Cam in there, and create it as a Zoom room, and then also in L-Building, and in the library as well, in the GLC. The other piece that we're doing is people still fax. So we're going to be moving over to an e-fax solution next year, that's fully HIPAA and private compliance, so that we can start to decrease the number of fax lines that we have in the school district, so people can just scan and fax, and have an email to them, and not have physical paper that comes out of a machine.
But the e-fax is complying with the, with the privacy laws?
Yeah, it's HIPAA, FERPA, and HIPAA and FERPA compliant. So you just have to make sure that you're setting it up correctly, so that it's only going to one individual person, and then it's compliant. The other big piece that we're doing is display and scheduling technology. So 15 years ago, I was asked at this table, how long smartboards are going to last? And I said 15 years. And, and they're starting to go now, one by one, they're starting to break. So I, like, I'm very happy that I did not, that I told the truth, but-
But unhappy that it came to pass.
Unhappy that now, we have lots of smartboards in our school district, that we're starting to, luckily LCD panels are much less inexpensive for us to, whereas smartboards, all-in cost used to be around $9,000 or $10,000. We're talking $3,000 for the LCD, touch LCD displays that we're putting in. Also, as we shift to more personalized, and more individualized, and small group instruction, we don't need this big thing in the front of our classrooms. We don't, we don't even necessarily want to know where the front of a classroom is. So lots of our rooms don't require as big displays as they used to. As we start building our new spaces, scheduling becomes really important. And we found this really cool product called Team, which actually integrates with Zoom, and our displays, and our casting devices, so that faculty, students, everybody can start to see what rooms are available, can schedule out those rooms, and know what resources those rooms have. And we could actually start to monitor what resources of the rooms are being used, and how often they're being used. So a small group room in our L-Building, we could find out how often and who is using that room, and when are they using it. The library conference rooms that we're building, we could, we could start to get all of those analytics, and start to make better decisions about the technologies that we purchase for them. And even as we start constructing new spaces, we might find out that we need a ton more small conference rooms, and we don't need as many large conference rooms, or we need large spaces or small spaces. So we could start to really get analytics about how space is being used throughout the school district. So we're starting in the Global Learning Center and OperaL as they come online, and then we're going to start increasing team scheduling throughout the school district into classrooms, and, and then it can integrate with ID badges, and really start to make robust use of our space and our technology in those spaces. And then the last piece is, we're using this immersive solstice pod that is universal casting, so that we could start to put those on every single device, so that the experience in every space that you go into is identical. And what that also starts to do is integrate our digital signage programs, so that if no one's in there, our digital signage is off. And you could even put emergency displays onto those signs, so it's a safety feature, and students can securely cast to those.
Is the Team scheduling going to replace any scheduling software that we already have?
There's no plans to replace any scheduling software that we already have. The plan is to use that during the school day for instructional spaces, right now. If we find that it's really great, and it works better than it, yeah, of course, right? But let's see if it works for us in those two flexible spaces, to see how we roll it out into larger spaces. Our inventory, we've got a lot of stuff. And particularly, the thing to note is, we have a lot of desktop PCs that I've discovered throughout the school district. So we're looking to reduce that significantly over the course of the next year or two, and also reduce the number of printers that we have. So you can see sort of our forecast, our PC desktops, hopefully over, over this year, we're planning on taking 610 of them out of service. I ran numbers, and we have all these clusters of computers that are in the middle school, and so with one-to-one, we get to pull those out. They're not being used right now to begin with. Our labs, we actually only have labs at Seven Bridges right now, and our plan is to remove most of those computers. And again, with one-to-one in those schools, we don't require them anymore. So now we have space that we can start to use for other things. Our laptop, PC laptops, numbers are going to go up slightly, our MacBooks are going to go up. And those too are because we're going to outfit our entire faculty by the, by the end of this summer with laptops. So then, we start to remove the PC desktops from classrooms, so teachers are mobile. As they're floating around schools, they can have a consistent experience. And then next year, our iPads are going to increase significantly, 1,600 is about enrollment that we have. So that's our forecast. And so the goal is that the types of devices that we have in our school, our iPads and MacBooks in our elementary schools, and our elementary schools are entirely Apple-based. The middle school, we have- The middle school, we have surfaces, and whether that's a Surface Go for students or a Surface Pro for teachers. So that's an entirely one-device type. And then our high school teachers have, for next year, Surface Goes, or Surface Pros, rather, in their classroom so that we now start to have a really consistent environment for teachers and students to work within. Our lease, as you can see, this proposed lease of 166,602 is one that's coming off lease from last year and that's being used to replace a lot of the displays that, a lot of the displays that are breaking are going to go into that lease. We also need to purchase Surface Goes for fifth and sixth grade, not a lot of them, but a bunch of them for fifth and sixth grade, as well as the iPads to finish out kindergarten and first, and laptops for students and teachers. That's that. So then, as the board approves, that number will increase for seventh and eighth grade Surface Goes.
And that's where 112 is?
Right, so that would be increased by that 112. Data, privacy and security, we are looking, so talking about protection, one of the things that we're implementing in a few weeks is called No Before, and this is something that lots of school districts in the region are going towards to combat phishing. Every school district and every organization has a real trouble combating email phishing expeditions that people go on. Part of that is training the people about cybersecurity, that's about half the equation. No Before is an online program that does that. It does things like, it'll send out fake phishing emails to people if they click on it. It'll say, hey, this was phishing, here are the things that you need to do in order to protect yourself in the district. And it also does some video training for teachers so that we need, that we start to train people in cybersecurity. And that's actually a requirement of the Ed 2D law. Fortinet is our firewall that we're increasing to use. We're implementing Aruba Clear Pass system, which is policies, which is going to, it's going to further put our Wi-Fi networks on to, for lots of different types of users so that everybody has different types of access and so that access is easier for certain people. So for instance, we have to authenticate ourselves on our district laptops to get to lots of websites. We'll be able to say, hey, this is Josh's laptop, we know that he owns this laptop, he signed off on that, so he has certain rights that he can do with it, whereas fifth grader John Chow only has other access, right? So this starts to really allow us for guest access, contractor access, employee access, student access, to start to granularly filter those pieces.
It's done with the MAC address? How did they know that?
Yeah, so we would register the MAC address to, if it's a district device, we'd register the MAC address to the program and it would assign an IP address to it. If not, there would be a user login if it's a BYOD device and then we would have, and so we would know who it is.
Dynamic IP address?
Yeah, and a dynamic IP address, right. And that starts to work with our entire firewall. The last piece that I want to bring up about student data protection is our Ed 2D regulations are finishing up a comment period with the state. And this is going to have some requirements on us as a school district. We already have a Parents' Bill of Rights, we're going to have to alter that, we're going to have to appoint a Chief Privacy Officer, we have to look at our cybersecurity standards, which we're already doing, we have to add an addendum to any technology contracts to talk about what we're, that, to make sure that our contractors are compliant with Ed 2D laws. And we also have to have improper disclosure practices, so investigation procedures if there is a data breach or if there is a network breach. We're going to have to build all of those procedures as part of Ed 2D. The timeline that they've given us, by this June, we're going to complete the upgraded Parents' Bill of Rights. In July, as the new school year starts, the board will adopt a data privacy officer. By September, we're going to have to have our data security and privacy policies adopted. And then in December is when the law starts to really take effect and we need to make sure that all of our contracts are compliant with the Ed 2D laws. The thing that I want to make sure that everybody knows in this room is, one company that is not compliant right now is Google. So we, I was actually just in Washington and our senators heard that from multiple people to know that Google's third-party provider pieces of their privacy policies are not compliant with New York or California privacy laws right now. And so that might change over time, but it also might change whether we're using Google Docs or Google Drive in the future.
Has Google made a statement about whether they intend to?
They've made no statements at all. They've said, they've been radio silent as of this moment, but obviously lots of school districts are in positions different than ours. By next year, we're not going to have any Chromebooks left in the district, but other districts that do are going to have, right, you're going to have the last Chromebook, right? It'll be, so those are pieces, and they're going to be some components of this that are innovation that we do, we're going to have to think about certain products that we use. So right now, we're inventorying every single product that our teachers are using and we've already had to say, hey, Wixi for that, a teacher wanted to use wixi.com for a portfolio that students were making or a website they were making and we had to say, they're not compliant, they sell their data to third parties, it's not compliant with Ed 2D laws. So this is a really, the regulations are very far-reaching in terms, and are really about protecting both students and teachers. They go very far in one direction and we're hoping after the comment period, the state says, we know the school districts are protecting our students, let's really think about what's a rational approach to data privacy. But it's probably not likely. So we are working to be ahead of the game to get all of our current contracts compliant, create the data privacy pieces that we need to put in place, database and start to log all of the software that we have, put it on our district website, put all their privacies up there and start to work through creating our policies and procedures around data privacy.
Are we submitting a comment?
We are submitting as a region, a comment that basically says, we really understand a lot of the pieces that you're using and what these data privacy laws stand for and we agree with it in philosophy. However, in the regulation, it goes very far in one direction that's going to start to stifle innovation and education in our school districts.
This is a public comment period for anybody to comment?
It's a public comment period, yeah, it's on the state website.
So I can go online and find the comments?
When is the end of the comment period?
I have to look to see, it's in a few weeks.
In a few weeks?
Yeah, I'll look to see exactly when the end of the comment period is.
And then we'll send that out to you.
Yeah, and then we'll send it out.
Do you know who's commenting primarily? I mean, are a lot of school districts going up there?
The, I know that as a region, we have sort of a tech directors committee, we were commenting as a group on it. I haven't heard anything of school districts that have commented on it or any other information. That's outside their note, I just haven't heard anything. And then the proposed budget, you could see an increase in certain areas. A lot of this really is for the services that I outlined tonight, to, for our new spaces and for our professional development around digital learning and any supplies that come into there. So you could see sort of a slight uptick as we become more immersed in lots of different departments and lots of different work, the technology components increase.
Are there any questions for Josh?
I know there's a lot.
Actually, some of the privacy and protections you're talking about, is that at all complicated when you're allowing kids to take the devices into their homes and onto different networks?
Yeah, so for us, that piece of it, we've already taken care of. So we filter those devices, whether they're in school or whether they're at home, right? So we will need to make sure that what we're doing for, we discussed this as a group, and what they're doing for school is adhere into all of those privacy policies that the state would allow for, and then we might have to start filtering out different websites on those devices based upon that. But really, just note, the privacy policies are around student, the issues are around student data that we have. Protecting kids, we have no problem with, right? Making sure that, but the data piece of it is where, so I'm not sure if this will affect that more so than what we're doing right now. Yeah.
I guess I would just share that over the course of the three presentations, I think you've seen a lot of progress in a lot of different areas, all of which is aligned to our strategic plan. And I just want to thank Heidi, Josh and Adam for all their work to present to you what we've been working on over the course of the year. Sometimes when you're in it, you don't realize how much has been happening around you and we've done a lot of great things for the kids of this district and I think our budget supports moving forward in a great progressive direction for the students here. So I want to thank the three of you for your work.
Are there any comments regarding technology?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Josh.
Can we move on to committee reports? Policy Committee, we're setting the meeting for next week, I believe, right?
Right, we're at the stage of setting up meetings.
All right.
Yes. And same for Communications.
We want to try and have one on Monday, but I'm not around.
Right, something to report after our meeting.
Right, Wednesday, the 20th, we have Communications before our next meeting, so we should be fine to report something then.
Okay.
I have a brief update, just realized. I did some research after the question came up last time, last week, about what are the delays in terms of road construction. And it turns out that a lot of the delays are engineering-type things between FNI and KGND, when a change is made, for instance, in the L Building, we had to put ceiling tiles in where there were none in the original design. That goes back and forth, there's a lot of, you went that way, in terms of who's responsible for what. And at times it's caused weeks' worth of delays in terms of getting the final approvals from engineering type or architectural design. That is all.
Also, I just want to add, I think what the two lawyers are talking about, the transfer agreement between, you know, our school district and the bonding company, we're hoping to get that agreement tomorrow. You know, that's the goal, so we'll see.
I had a question, I know this is probably we can take in there, during last presentation last week regarding personnel numbers.
Yes, so Lauren, the question you had was, when we look at the salary components, because we had the per pupil cost overall budget, but your question was, if I understood it correctly, was the salary divided into the enrollment, what is the per pupil cost for the salary? So for the 18, 19 school year, I'm using the actual enrollment and the average per student is $16,420, $16,420, that's the salary component. And for 19, 20, the average per pupil is $17,348.
Okay. Thank you, John. Public comment, we welcome public comments in respect for each other's time. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding those comments presented. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you very much. Approvals and ratifications. Do we have a motion for 3.1, except minutes of March 6th board meeting?
Item 3.1, is it as amended?
It's 3.1 as amended, correct. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Wait, what was amended?
Minutes of March 6th last week.
We're not amending it.
I second. Just changing the word, altering it.
We're just saying, we'll move it as amended.
What is it? It's, the typo's not in here anymore, that was corrected, we don't have to do it as amended.
Oh, I thought you commented that it wasn't.
No, it has to do with an agenda, it was an agenda.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Agenda, not the minutes, that's what we're saying.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Okay.
So it's just as amended.
Right, I thought it was correct, but I, never mind.
Can we revise that? Would you like to restate how you approve?
I move 3.1 as stated in the agenda.
I second that.
Well, you have to move to take my motion off the table?
I think you can just amend your motion, right?
I'll amend my motion to move item 3.1 as stated in the agenda.
I withdraw my first second and second now.
You seconded twice already, so you're withdrawing two seconds.
I'm going to order third.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing to recommend tonight.
Okay.
Under personnel.
I'd like to, items 5.1 and 5.2 together, so I see summaries reported to the board on March 11th.
I'll move 5.1 and 5.2.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.3, be it resolved if the Board of Education approves bid award recommendation B 2019-2, graduation tent and chair rental recommended award to Cantel Tent, Cantel E. Tent rentals in the amount of $23,336.80. I will move 5.3 for graduation.
I will second.
Any discussion?
No, it's the same company, as usual.
And they do a great job.
They do.
It's the same company, right?
Yes, last year was the first time, it's the same company.
It's the same company as last year, but not previous.
And it's the same amount, too.
Congratulations to the seniors graduating to be able to have their graduation under the tent. All in favor?
Aye.
5.4, the motion be resolved if the Board of Education approves a bid award renewal recommendation B 2018-2, construction labor and materials recommended awarded to Anthony M. Nataro, public contract, effective March 15th, 2019 to March 14th, 2020, for various hourly rates as stated.
I'll move 5.4.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Tom, why is this not concurrent with the school year?
Well, because that was the time when we went out to bid, so this is a continuation.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
5.5, be resolved if the Board of Education approves the agreement for services with Apple Incorporated, for an Apple professional learning specialist to support the district's defined learning goals during 2019, 2020 school year, for two two-day engagement at a rate engagements at a rate of $4,500 per engagement and for three-day engagements at a rate of $6,500 per engagement, not to exceed $35,000, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. I will move 5.5, thank you, Apple.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, I actually have a question.
Okay.
So this is for the next school year?
Next school year.
So this is for the budget that we haven't approved yet? Or we pay this out of this year's budget?
No, it's going to be out of next year's budget, but we need to sign on now.
Okay.
So is this for work at the elementary school with the devices? What is?
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, Dave, just for an example, Josh had a couple of pictures up there, they help our, they've been supporting our elementary teachers in learning computer science and coding. They've also done professional development on, using the iPads in the classrooms. They also have supported our technology professional development over the summer. So we had the Tech Expo for a couple of days, I think we called it the Tech Expo, right? For a couple of days over the summer and they've come in and offered breakout session professional development.
Okay, so this is for summer and throughout the year?
Yes, we need to reserve the dates now, we don't need to pay them until we use the service. So it'll be next year's budget, but we all, they're building their calendars now, so we need to get this contract approved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not going to read 5.6, however, this is, these are the propositions for the district vote on May 21st, I believe the day is, and, May 21st. We added the language that says, no budget increases called for in this proposition for the first and the second proposition. Everything else remains the same. second proposition. Everything else remains the same. So, do I have a motion for 5.6? I will move 5.6. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding that?
No, thank you for adding the language, we're finding out about it.
Yes, thank you.
I think that was a good idea.
Yeah, very good idea.
Thank you for suggesting, I remember you suggested it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. And thank you to Jessica, wherever she may be, for finding.
Aye.
Item 5.7, be resolved, the Board of Education of the Chappock Central School District, Westchester County, New York, hereby authorizes and directs the district clerk to give notice to qualified voters of the school district of the annual public hearing on the budget and annual meeting, school district election, library election, and vote as follows. Notice of annual public hearing on budget, annual meeting, school district election, public library, library election, and vote. I will move 5.7, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Facilities, we had, anything else?
Nothing's changing, that's fine.
Okay. Financials, can I take, I'd like to have a motion to take 7.1 and 7.2 together?
I'll move 7.1 and 7.2.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Notice of future meetings, next meeting is Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, 7:30 PM. We'll be discussing athletics, operations, maintenance, budget presentations, right here at the Horace Reilly High School, Academic Commons. And then, March 27th, 2019, 7:30 PM, non-instructural revenue, tax rates, contingency budgets, presentations for the budget, Horace Reilly High School, Academic Commons. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:18?
I'll adjourn.
Have a second.
Can I, can I just thank you everyone for rearranging your schedules to meet tonight? And I'll send pictures along from the Regeneron Award Ceremony tomorrow.
All right, black tie, we want to see it.
So, I appreciate everyone's flexibility here.
Okay.
So, uh-
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.